That's the hot seat there, Jim. Come on, that's a place.
The chief is on.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve the February thirteen twenty twenty four Ritter meeting minutes.
Motion to approve the Ritter meeting minutes, February thirteen twenty twenty four.
Second. Mr. Tager?
Hi.
So, um, just to go to the planning that one, make a motion, I have something.
Motion, uh, move to approve transfer forty thousand dollars vehicle fuel into auto parts, both in the general fund of expenditures due to increased costs of cars and our repair jobs. The remainder of fiscal year twenty four.
Second.
Second.
Question? Hey, man?
Hi.
The most. I have two things.
Move to approve thirty one thousand one hundred sixty five dollars fifty cents for the sale of land, labor, materials, weapons. The vehicle reserve, the use for purchase of vehicles, count in the capital non-recurring fund.
Second.
Second.
Question? On the table?
Hi.
The most? You have a three ten?
Move to appropriate an eight thousand dollar historic documents preservation grant to the document preservation account, the special revenue fund.
Second.
Second.
Question? Thank you, favor?
Hi.
And more?
Move to appropriate seven hundred fifty thousand dollar state urban grant to the police station renovation grant account and the police station construction fund.
Second.
Second.
Question?
It's business.
Move to approve transfer thirty thousand dollars from the VNA improvement account to the senior van account, both in the CNR fund.
Second.
Second.
Uh, just a couple of quick.
You're done, that's it, right?
Couple of quick updates, um, we were a little behind on current attack receipts last month, we were caught up as expected in February, we're only three tenths of a percent of the quarter off. They're really pretty good about that. Um, expenditures are a little bit higher than fiscal year did last year, a little bit of that is so all the time, you just have a little bit more at this point than last year. And then some additional increases. Did a little more sapping retain than at this time last year, we've still experienced some turnovers, but like, um, still expecting to be on or below budget. And then, um, I didn't modify the risks and opportunities at this point, I didn't see anything particularly new that I would expect between the last time and this time. Uh, so still in the same area. And the VNA had a good revenue month, almost sixty four thousand dollars. That were to be applied across all months, that would have been essentially the plan level. So, obviously one month at a time with the trend, but good month is still a good month. Something you need that happen on it. There's a little bit of catch up in, um, arguing with the insurance companies and probably need some money. And then just, uh, census, taking in debt and some revenue. It's there when doing that, it reminds me of talking to the reason. Not right now, we're still trying to, everybody's trying to organize a few hell, and we're still in the, in the spot, everybody's in the role.
So it'd be fair to say that that sixty three thousand. It should be given to the previous month and month before.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't say that we should expect sixty thousand, everyone's going forward, but still. So how's our, how you doing?
Slash ninety weeks is what's going to each other.
Exactly. Yeah, a lot changed, the world's different now, Rob. Yes.
Recording in progress.
I have answers to Jared's questions, but I figured, Jared got here. Let's look at your, is that, when we look at, you got projections for both? Well, I mean, that would be the risks and opportunities at this point. So. Net net, by now, I would say somewhere between seven hundred thousand and one point seven million, that's gross. I don't say that only because we appropriated considerable money, so overall, the, the operation element would be negative of your deduction, overall, on balance. If we appropriate all that on balance and then the current year surplus is lasting appropriate, you end up with a net operating loss. Is that all the appropriations that would be run through operations, such as the appropriate.
You're saying on the low side, it would be simple.
That's absolutely true, that doesn't assume any identified surplus that would be used before we close out the books for capital or anything else that might be used. That could be used to offset, as we've done in the past. We hit kind of June, July, anticipate surplus, and there's an opportunity to address suppressing capital needs, which makes your net surplus lower, but you'll be addressing capital needs. This is just gross as the general fund operating budget goes. There's still that much of a range of interest, so let's have a better picture, given the Fed's are second, not gonna lower interest rates. The biggest challenge right now is, is on cash flow, because we have some substantial projects that are finishing, but the pace of those projects. How much that money goes out? A couple of them were state funded, and they're gonna, they're likely going to come in under budget, to the extent that closes out more quickly than I might have expected. Said differently earlier, before the fiscal year closes, that money then has to be returned to the state. So it's a matter of how quickly the state will close that out, once they do, we could be looking at a million dollars or more returned on five plus million dollar project. It's, it's a good thing for the town projects completed and taxpayers overall, that less money is spent, because then that could be put back in and used for other projects, including those of the pound supply.
So we're looking at, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, um, so we're looking at roughly a million dollar swing. At the, coming out of the fiscal year, is that what I'm hearing?
As roughly, of a surplus, overall surplus.
And where were we last year?
To finish the fiscal year?
This time last year, how much will we look at?
I don't, I don't have that. Last year probably would have been a much larger range, because it was in the heart of the Fed's historic rapid rise in the interest rates. Interest rates have kind of settled in a little bit.
Okay, um, maybe we could, um. Please, um, have any questions down the time, potential, if you want to make, remember, we can, we don't, we don't vote on you. I have a, but, um, I think, um. While the chief is here, um, I guess the, the thing that, um, I'm still questioning is. We're going to move back in time, you know, for, for fully adopted, we want to find, we put in the full complement, you know, fifty four, off the budget, to then, of course. What do you?
For the pension?
Oh, talk about any current budget.
How many, for the pension or for payroll?
For the budget.
But how many people in for payroll? There were forty two in for payroll.
If the budget. We cited it for forty six, yeah.
Current year, FY twenty four?
No, twenty five.
Oh, twenty five, sorry, yes, yes, well, forty six.
So, I guess when I brought up the, you know, period of overtime, I would expect some reduction. I really want, and I know that you're saying that FY twenty four, we're gonna go in with another three hundred thousand. But I, I guess I'm asking for the chief to take a look at and say, what's going on with the overtime and come up with a plan that's gonna hit, you know, a lower number for FY twenty five?
Chief, um, did you hear the chairman?
He wants an explanation why the, um, overtime is higher than what they're anticipating, right?
And, uh, plan in FY twenty five to bring it down, is that fair?
Okay. Well, one of the things that, that you could do is you could start charging for all the, uh, times that we waived these fees at all these not, you know, nonprofit events and stuff, because that's coming out of my budget. I'm having a hard time hearing you, what was that?
I said, is that any different than what we've done in the past?
Well, the number, I think, is going up, we started tracking it a year ago, but right now, if you want to run any special event, you just go to the town council and get a waiver, and then, um. You know, then, the cops still gotta get paid for doing the job, so we're taking it out of our budget. And, uh, you know, oftentimes, that's in the category of overtime, it's not straight time.
I guess I'm just looking at, um, you know, that's one, one was explained last night by the deputy, uh, you explain it. It was almost like normal course of business, he wasn't saying anything unique, you know, you had, you had, um, you know, a death or something, you had to deal with murder, but you had, you have to deal with car theft or whatever, but. I mean, that's normal stuff you guys have been dealing with for the last few years, right?
Yeah, of course, you know, the types of crimes that we're responding to have changed since I've gotten here even, um. There's a lot more, uh, required training and all, so we have to backfill, when we have to send our personnel to all the mandated training, that's not being funded by the state now. And, um, so I'm sure that's one of the, the reasons why we're seeing an increase in the overtime. For officers that have to work for backfilling, you know, we, we pretty much run our shifts on minimum manpower numbers. We, we just, in the contract, that's, uh, we negotiated last year, we've come up with a system to try and, uh, change the way the, the officers are working so that we can get more personnel. Out into the field on, on certain dates, so we could do things like traffic enforcement and all beyond the, the course of normal duties. Uh, what used to be a lot of single car calls have become two car calls, because we don't run double people in the car, but your, you know, domestic violence is up, your mental health calls are up. Your, um, we are the emergency medical responders for the town, so those numbers are, are, are pretty consistent with medical calls and all, um. You know, I mean, I, I'm sure we can sit down and, and try and say, what generates the overtime, I, I think it's kind of simple to figure out that what's generating the overtime is it takes us a year. From the time that we identify a person and hire them, to when we can get them out on the road. And last year, we had eight people in the academy, we have three people in the academy now, we're looking to put three more in to get to the forty six. We won't see a full complement of personnel until probably sometime in the beginning of the next year, beginning of twenty twenty five. That's if nobody leaves or says, you know, I'm going to another agency or whatever. That's if we can get to that full strength, which we're planning on trying to do before the end of this fiscal year.
Okay, I mean.
And I think, I think if we have full strength, you, you're gonna naturally, when everybody's on, in all the spots, that's gonna reduce some of the overtime, because right now, we're covering shifts. By ordering people in to stay for shifts. So, um, that number's gonna have to go down once we have everybody in place working.
Well, how much, how much of the, um, overtime is being for because of, uh, mandated training versus, uh, non-mandated training? Can you break those numbers down for us? In other words, you have your state mandated training and you have to fill slots for that, how much training is being done above and beyond that? It's not mandated, but still, we're, we're filling slots for overtime.
Off the top of my head, we try not to send people to training if it creates an overtime situation. So the only time we really have that is when we have to send people to that mandated training, but I, I'd have to, uh, have the training officer research that and come up with the numbers. I mean, y- you want specifics, it's gonna take me some time to gather that information.
I guess, chief, what, what I'm trying to understand is sort of like the pipeline of new recruits, you know, you hire somebody, they go to training at the academy. Are we paying salaries whether at the academy?
Yes.
Yes.
So then they come back and they're on duty, or they come into the force, my understanding is that they have some, they partner up with a sergeant and there's some training there.
Well, so, it's not a sergeant, thank God, because that would cost us even more money. Um, so you go to the academy for approximately six months, depending on when they get into the academy and how holidays work and all, so it could be anywhere from. Five and a half months to six and a half months with the calendar. Then, if they successfully graduate the academy, they have to do a field training officer component, and that's about fifteen weeks. So, if all goes well, and they're successful in those fifteen weeks, at the end of fifteen weeks, they then move to being the probationary officer for a year. But now they're out on their own, so they can handle calls and, you know, cover a district and all that.
And they do overtime?
Yes, once they're off of, um, the FTO, they can do overtime, but that's, and I'll be honest, that's not actually accurate, because what happened is, like, at the, uh, Berlin Fair, we had our. F, our people in FTO last year, because we were shorthanded, having to work traffic posts at the Berlin Fair, and some of that was on straight time and some of that was on the Berlin Fair rate.
But again, again, the pipeline I'm trying to understand, I don't know if this is correct, somebody told me we just had four officers come off FTO. That's, is, is, is that true, and that's a lot of, that's a fair amount of officers? And that, at some point, will be replaced probably by three more coming in for their fifteen month period. So it doesn't seem to be cumulative, it, you know, it's used for those four, then it frees up to use for the three, then frees up to use from the three, but it seems to be going up and up in the budget.
What I thought I heard from the chief, the deputy last night, was that this next year would still be relatively as high as last year, because it's always a tight line in doing the training for the year, which then we should see.
Well, as high would be rated, but it's a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
I think, I think what, um.
Twenty percent.
What I did was, I went back four years, right, where we, we had a staff of maybe had thirties.
Thirty five, so.
Okay, so, so on FY twenty, we spent four hundred and seventy five thousand in overtime, FY twenty one, five hundred. And FY twenty two, it goes up to six oh four, and FY twenty three, it's up to twelve, so if you're starting at a lower common note early years. Why wouldn't over, you start to build the workforce, why wouldn't that overtime start to reduce as opposed to?
Yeah, you, you gotta take in account wage increases, and you also have to take into account that as the department has been growing, the amount of training that is required, that number also grows, because you have more personnel.
One thing to be careful of in the early years there, the police contract at that point in time, typically it takes, I'll say a year, six months to a year to do a union contract. There was a police contract that took an extended period of time, there was actually, um, arbitration matter going on, and the contract took a while to complete. And so you had wages, and then that went retro, uh, more than two years retro, so then wages went up substantially from that point. The other thing I, I, some who have been around may remember that, uh, there was a lot of conversation within the police commission, and the council had the chief, the previous chief. Because of a number of car break-ins and some other activities that were happening, they were actually putting officers on overtime, on second and third shift, they were actually adding an officer. The additional staffing, as I understand it, chief, tell me if I'm wrong, is so that we can keep that, the additional staffing, but at straight time. Rather than necessarily filling with overtime because of the increased crime activity, so you, you had a little bit of, the evening stands, it seems, a little different policing back then, where you had one less person, especially on night shift, if I'm not mistaken. I think that's, that's the chief, that's the problem. Chief, has minimum staffing increased? Sorry, no, he's on mute.
Staffing has not increased. Our minimum staffing is, our minimum staffing is three officers. Per shift, one, one per district, so when I got here, you were paying overtime for a fourth or a fifth officer, depending on what it was at night, and you were also short, um, two supervisors, so you weren't, you were paying supervisors overtime then too. So, we've pretty much cut out the supervisors overtime now, because we have full staffing for our supervisory ranks, it's the patrol officers that we don't have full staffing in. And we're, we're doing a lot of ordering still to make the minimum staffing. One of the things too is, and, and, and it's, it's not a financial issue, but our new hires, or our younger people, our Gen Z employees, they don't want to work more than forty hours a week. So, you have certain officers that are really working to pick up the, the slack on a regular basis, while some officers are just doing a forty hour work week or third, whatever it is that they have to get done. And they don't want to commit for any extra shifts and stuff like that, but that's a natural, that's a problem with hiring across the country right now too.
Oh, Jared, is there any questions? Sure. All right, uh, leases, leases now include both the cell tower lease behind the building and mobile home, that has. We're not going into too much detail with the new gas, they're basically in the same bucket now. Uh, projecting FY twenty four at a hundred eighty six thousand. FY twenty five is assuming, uh, four units vacant, just learned today, there's now a fifth going to be vacant, so no rent from those units at three hundred fifty dollars a month. And twelve, the twelve remaining units with four month rent holiday for the deed restriction, that was part of the incentive for deed restriction, which would bring you down to about a hundred fifty thousand.
Okay, the budget number is one oh six.
Um. There was some assumption around. More, more vacancies, I'll put it that way. So. We're seeing a, now a trend of between age and, uh, health, we're seeing a trend, um. Uh, town clerk FY twenty four, I would project that four hundred fifty to four hundred sixty thousand dollars. However, that is trending down, which is why it was brought down, the biggest driver of that's going to be conveyance tax revenue. And if, if real estate's not moving, the fees associated with that aren't moving. Um, building, seven hundred sixty to seven hundred seventy five thousand. That was lower, maybe a little too conservative, but lower, large part because of the number of individual large, uh, fees. We have several developments that have contributed between fifteen and fifty thousand dollars in instances. So, you can get wild swings from those, um, we've experienced substantial amounts there, really, ever since COVID started. But, you know, eventually, everybody's put in a pool, everybody's redone their act, everybody's done the driveway and other things, uh, but yeah, maybe, maybe a little too conservative.
As the, the project, everybody, the lobster, which I paid, paid fees.
They have started. I believe there's, I believe there's three phases to that, they're on the first one, I think, well, I know they're on the first one, I believe it's the rate. Yep, yeah. Yep. And then lastly, you'd asked about VNA, I would estimate that to be at five hundred to five point five for this year, for this year. Next year's three fifty, I know when the town manager gave his presentation, he was comfortable bringing it up to four hundred. Keep in mind, um, two, the two health aid positions that do generate revenue are eliminated in the budget, and one nursing position to be, so. While there will be some opportunity to bring it together, anybody who comes, anybody who is referred to the VNA that requires health aid services, will be able to service.
Not doing per diem?
Yeah, so when we submitted the budget at that time, we were not sure that we could do it, but I think there's a way that we can hire per diem, so, I mean, if you ask me, I'll, I'll, I can move it up to four fifty. You know, it was not fifty, a hundred, and continue to do the out of town, as long as they're mostly making. But they, they do with that big of budget, budget, it's been better.
Now, like we said before, the issue wasn't doing out of town, it was doing out of town for a loss.
Yeah, yeah.
If, if we're making a proper re-breaking even out of town to keep the staff busy, then that's fine. And, uh, it's, it could be a little selective.
And the question, we, your question, I had mentioned, name, uh, charging separate rates for different, thanks to another.
Oh. I think those are the only follow up questions.
I think they're all over that though. As far as that.
We were, we were talking about if a service is provided and we get, we only get reimbursed this, and we're dealing with per diem people, and we only say we're only just paid that.
Oh, it's hard to, I understand what you're saying, yeah. Well, I, I mean, generally, a per diem is gonna be worth, only for a period of time. Saw the sheets that we got when we, the last, the last meeting we was at, where, where downtime is being averaged, pretty significant. You know, running errands for where I stopped, this is the other arm that should be going. You're, you're not in order to that one per diem, because you're not paying benefits and you're only paying them for the time they're assigned. You know, you, you, you gotta, you gotta time allotted for this task, and that's per diem, it's paid based on that.
Yeah, our, our discussion was among the lines, if we can reimburse a lower amount for a service, and we pay, and we just say, okay, if you're doing service A, for this provider, you're gonna get paid this.
Well, that's what we have.
Different for this person.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I don't know about that, you know.
I think the issue you're gonna get into is they're not gonna take the job, it can be selective, because like, I don't work for that.
Per diem's, don't worry, they get paid the most.
That's what comes into play, right? We have to spend five, that's it.
Right, so. Kevin, do we have the first adjustment for the budget, adding a hundred pay revenue, one, maybe a night?
You wanna do that?
Yes, you'd have to vote.
And you don't necessarily have to vote tonight, just stockpile them and then go vote, or you can vote on them one at a time. You know, do you want to make a motion to increase the revenue with somebody seconds you vote, it's in.
Well, we just don't want to get into a revenue stature, we don't like that.
Oh, no, what I mean, I'm sorry, I'm just going along. He's doing the same, we compare, I'm like, make a motion, we increase the M by a hundred thousand dollars in three fifty.
So are we prepared for a place, Walker?
Make a motion that we increase the revenue of the V N A from three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Actually, in my mind, I, I don't doubt that we're going to end up doing some of that. Okay, I'd like to see whether we end up with. Other, other adjustments.
We're sticking with the revenues at this point. I knew you should have asked this earlier, but is there any particular reason that the back taxes and the suspense taxes. Of only nine hundred and twenty-five million run was the run in today, this year is, is. If you see the votes are maybe up there.
Um, that number was based upon, at the time when the budget was developed, what was outstanding. And we assume seventy percent of it collected, it's kind of the approach we've been taking. So over the last several years, the town was having a fair amount of success collecting on the back taxes. So in looking at, using that methodology, we, we, that's how we kind of approached it as to what's available and what we're able to collect. Um, the other part of it is, at the time the budget was submitted, there was an open question. Being discussed with the council as to whether we would continue doing tax sales, whether we would continue the existing process. So we didn't know. Where the town wanted to go with the back tax collection at first. So intentionally, intentionally conservative because if that element is taken off the table or. If um tax sales are removed and an alternative that takes longer to complete. Uh is used, then the ability to collect in the fiscal year would be lower. So that's why we want to do that.
So if we save the course and everything stays the same, say, still stay to that number or if you say. That uncertainty's gone away and potentially there's more.
I mean, there's potentially more because if we're using seventy percent, if we were to collect a higher amount, it's, it's based on an assumption we've used.
Have you changed your philosophy as far as that, as far as tax sales?
I think based upon a recent tax sale, I don't think the process moved very well. Myself personally and as did others, uh I think we just need to, which we could probably discuss that quickly and probably decide. Uh you know, it could have been just an anomaly, but it was kind of a very questionable. Not in a way that it occurred. Um, this is just way too much to go into, but we spent a bunch of time on the council, get to the bottom of it and it was not. Said that it was wrong, but it's just very good communication. That's probably the biggest part.
The town was invited to participate in a Kensington Fire District tax sale. And there was concern, issue, I'm not sure what word to use. About how publicized that tax sale was and the participation of the. Um Berlin room in that tax sale. A, a local tax sale has very specific communication mechanisms, including. Those of you who have come in during the meetings, you could see the white pieces of paper on the board. If you have to go up the rights there, well upstairs, you would see them. In addition to other publications and notifications. Um, and this one, because it wasn't a town one. What happens is when the attorney is working with the Kensington and Worthington. They extend the offer that if there's a lien outstanding for Berlin, would you like to participate as well? Similarly, if there's a Berlin sale, they extend that to Kensington and Worthington. Um and there were concerns. Um, a little concerns with the attorney, with the approach. A lot of incident. So we were intentionally conservative. Well, we intentionally stuck with the same percentage, which was. We tried to balance being more conservative if the tax sales were taken off the table versus being more aggressive to fix state.
I don't think we, I don't, I don't think the plan is to take them off the table, but I think we need to make some adjustments in how they happen, not that. They didn't follow the statute, but it was, yeah, it was just, we followed the statute, but it was nothing to town. There was no advertising, they had other players after it. Sitting out and turning the website, didn't really make it to the public. Uh, I think that's part of the problem that was concerning, so we need to. But, but I think that wouldn't, I don't think the plan is to hand that.
Based on. Building inspections, these. You know, if we have that big project that I'm referring by. That one thing.
You have that one, you have that on proposed, you might even see that's. More than likely going to go through because it's a dash thirty G, that's a hundred and twenty apartments. So the apartment's the big build five A, accurate deal, it's pretty much on the scene again. And so we're still got collectively eighty on the books too. Thirty, which would definitely go forward.
Little houses, you just know that's, that's, then that's going to go, definitely.
I mean, if we went for six fifty, even seventy-five thousand dollar difference, it would still be. A hundred, uh ten, hundred twenty thousand less than the current year. Right, motion to, on our chance, building inspection, please, please, six hundred fifty thousand, please. The town third, please, uh that one, what are, what are mostly, um, they were saying. Type uh transaction fees or.
Yes.
Now, it's two years, I have those six, eight, you know, projections before quickly.
I mean, the, the challenge there is, there just aren't nearly the number of homes for sale in Berlin right now, as it were. So when you don't have that.
So again, they like, on the lease revenue, um.
I, I would say that there's, there's upside, um. I mean, I.
How, how about a good try and, you know, where. Um, well, one eighty-six and maybe dropping some, but we're budgeting. And one oh six.
I mean, if you were to add fifteen thousand, should be. They said the, the biggest risk is uh vacancy, uncontrollable vacancy.
I'm going to motion to add fifty thousand to the lease right now, Ryan. We're, we're definitely at some point, you know, end up cutting six hundred fifty thousand plus. And so make a motion that adds two hundred fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred eighty million dollars. State revenue, state transaction. Interest income. You know, I, I, I understand the, the. I wish we all got fixed as well, but the rates that they're developing next year. That one was going to take twenty-one years, three thousand five. And I think, I think there's still some room there. You know, like, even with the downside, I think everybody's expecting with that's. Like, whereas the end of, the, the, mid of this year, which will affect all of that series of why you. I think that's related to some of your, you know, your current calculations on skip, like, uh the other C D. Then, you know, I mean, it, it, it's a good guess, you know, but, um, you know, they think if we're going to get. Um, yeah, I think, I mean, before I ask. But in terms of. Big chunks of models that we've had for this year, I don't know if any of that aren't going to be around that. I think you can maybe invest because we have. You know, and we have forty million on that sheet, forty-five million. Are there things that we've done big outflows for that we don't have for the whole of the year now?
Yes, uh two, the two biggest, most notable ones would be the ARPA grant, much of which, uh we had a little bit over five million dollars. We spent some of it with Willard, start of the year, and it's been unwinding. But as that project completes, that revenue, that money is gone. The town also received. Rough approximation, five point five million dollars of lots of grants for the three road project. That project obviously moved along, as we drive on the road, you can all see it's essentially, I'll say essentially concluded, the engineers may disagree with that, but. Um, but the bill in lags. So as a project might get completed in, say, November, we may not see a bill till December or January with payment. So those are two. Ten plus million dollar items that won't be on the books essentially next year. There may be a little ARPA money left if. Contingency is not needed at Willard. Those would be the two biggest single elements. But. I mean, if, if you increase it, I'll do what I can to invest to hit the number.
On the other side of that, we do a bonding. Um, the, the interest doesn't stay defined, actually, interest goes to the general one that offset the interest.
Correct.
So if we did bonding this year, we got. Going on, to invest as long as we can, pay that immediately.
As long as they don't pay it out immediately is, and as long as we complete the project. Yeah, I'll just make a general statement, the schools are a little different, but within eighteen months, if we don't, we're in a potential arbitral situation. Because municipal bond rates have been dipping down into the two to three percent range lately for triple A issues. Which I'm assuming we would be affirmed at triple A based on everything. And. Uh. So I would assume that if we're going to stay there. Um, that low rate, if we're earning four or five percent. We can end up in arbitrarre situation where basically the IRS says, you're going to hire somebody, you're going to pay somebody several. Ten to about twenty thousand dollars or whatever, to do a calculation on the difference and you take that difference and you give it to the IRS. So we wouldn't see it in our.
Well, on, following on, I mean. Put the numbers out there, I, who knows. I'm not going to make a motion yet, until other people have decided. I, I would think that we could check that. Go on to. When the, um, we have the people off, so we really need to please go time off.
I thought I would, but so, but like, we submitted it last year too.
Yeah.
Same thing. I guess, I go to physical people all the time. I, I really don't see any issues going on there, whatever, but ninety-nine percent of the money. I look at other towns, surrounding towns, nobody has to, you know, like, control to. Other towns our size, I went to state, picked out about six of them, they all have about one, you know, control officer. It just seems. That's, it's pretty, you know, if it wasn't for the benefits cost and all that, I mean, it's a big nut, even nine thousand dollars or something like that, that's a big nut. I, I guess if I, we're going to really, I'd really like to see some stats about. You know, how many calls you're going to and things like that, how many complaints you've had. I, I just don't see the need for that. So again, I go there all the time. I, I just, I don't understand the rationale for it.
So where you saw one, there's still been like part of the P D.
They're all part of the P D, so. You know, they're being backed up. I mean, the chief would say that he's the one that did the call. But mo- well, most of them do that. I mean, we looked into a couple of things. First off, like state statute. If it's not in the town charter, animal control officers have to be appointed by the chief of police. That's why most of them work for the chief of police. So really, as a town council or a town manager, we actually don't have the authority. To name a, a animal patrol officer for state statute. Arson, but it wa- it was.
I have a job on animal position, it's a tiny physician's in the nursing, you know, the path is orange, it's because, you know, it's just a vocal issues. But it looks. A little. Unhealed, you know, for the people that are being. In your animal, that's how it strikes you.
That's how it strikes you.
Yeah, but that that's a business decision, right?
I understand that.
I know the code isn't usually several hundred thousand dollars.
I understand this, but it. When you're the person in the charters.
Even the, where we go, there's a seven, something, something in place to figure out. Don't have no sense of figure out.
Oh, my God, it is something that there, but it's, so if there are any discussions. Since nineteen or two, you know, certainly many people want to dance, but you've been.
Yeah, there's some agreement that the town man that's tying our hands now, when she got hired back.
So it's because the same person stood it.
Well.
It's not the difference in the chief.
No, 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 I think we're looking at state levels now, though, I have a feeling there's a problem with their not being under P D. I think there's a problem. By state statute, we're violating state statutes.
Yeah.
Sure about that?
Yeah.
I don't know, and I was really expecting, I'm not sure. We have to. Well, we'll look at that. It's a general issue, another. At some point. Yeah. Yeah, it is very intriguing. Yes, it is.
When the meeting's not recorded. Seventy-eight thousand two hundred ninety-two dollars, if you want to be specific.
Thanks, but.
We moved the additional, moving the part-time animal control officer. To full-time and leaving that part-time and moving seventy-eight thousand two hundred ninety-two dollars on our labor and. Benefits portion of their budget. Well, the other, uh, I'm kind of looking for what if you can possibly, you know. And you know, I know we let off a local match, we got the ground match, and actually. I'll think of all, but now I'm going to be going to a few of these, and. For you guys, I think if you want me to continue to already set up.
Thanks, Chris. It's very, very.
And you know, how much you spent on that match this year?
Uh, we didn't know off the top of the head.
Well, that's really actually.
You you put a hundred, we appropriated a hundred fifty thousand.
So we're going to do a proper. I mean. Just to that application. So this is the night that we just talked about, the contest I found in December. This place has been paid a hundred dollars.
Well, a hundred fifty thousand is appropriate. This isn't. That hundred fifty thousand, that was an appropriation of not, a non-budgeted. Unassigned fund balance appropriation. The council and you guys just approved that. Yeah, that's separate.
It was not, but.
Wasn't this the additional reinsurance four hundred thousand, just to make sure to have money readily available because the choose a lot more times.
There are specific grants. That. Coincide with. The the priorities that were identified. So the first one was Steve twenty twenty-four, so that's. There's a clock ticking in that, obviously, because many towns applying. And the focus there is going to be East Berlin pool or what happens with. Future there, uh, the pool is not open. The town has to take action. Some probably can't just leave an open hole there, that's dangerous. The second one was twenty twenty-four recreational trails grant. So, um, and then the next one was plans and cost estimates. For the seat twenty twenty-five grant. So there have to be plans put together when we apply for these, and I just. We're not just throwing our name out there, but there's actually some book on it. Plans for the twenty twenty-five connectivity grant, so that's the side continuation of the sidewalk and. Berlin is a more walkable community. Initiative or strategy. And then, uh, the last one was other grants that we know they come up during the year, so that's what the four hundred thousand was directed towards. Um, all of which obviously since the last one, we assumed that would coincide. All of those are priorities that have been discussed. At the council, they've been discussed here and they've been actively worked, whether it's economic development, planning and zoning. Uh, certainly Parks and Rec has been involved in the pool and made a recommendation there, so that's why they were. Put out there is they they support, financially support strategy that has been discussed multiple times.
Where is the number of four hundred thousand components tied to a certain?
It's tied to each one of those.
So you got the one fifteen fifty.
I'm sorry. Uh, I was looking. Uh, I was looking at the presentation that we did the very first night. It would be slide sixteen. It was the transfers. There was a chart on there. I'm sorry, Dom.
That's okay. Uh, just want to add, then I do have to. There was some confusion as to whether or not that money gets, that the money that we have to come up with for these grants. If we don't get awarded the grants, then we don't have to spend that money, just to clear.
And the intent of putting it in transfers, that's a really good point, putting it in transfers versus the. Um, versus a specific department in the general fund. The intent was to transfer this into the Economic Development Fund. Which is a capital project fund, which is why it was lumped into the one point three million of capital, and it's non-lapsing, so. Let's just say in an extreme case, you decide to put four hundred thousand or two hundred thousand. And we don't get any of these grants. That two hundred thousand would sit in that fund unless the council and board of finance decided to pull it back out. So we, yeah, we could use it for future grants, it would be there. And that's part of the reason for that is you wouldn't be dealing with, oh, it's lapsing at the end of the year, the clock's running. Um, because there are times we had, um. Forget the grant that had the January. Deadline, we, you actually approved it. After the deadline, so we filed with the idea that we could pull it back. There was money we were appropriating. It was like a thirty day window from the state. I forgot which one Jim was working on. One of these on the list. It might have been steep, it might have been the twenty-four steep. So the 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 window is narrow to the point where if we'd waited, we literally wouldn't have made, your your meeting would have been after the deadline.
Yeah. So except for the last one, the seventy-five, it's like catch all, like we heard, opportunities. So how much is it down when, when this team twenty twenty-four? We're expecting to get half a million if we do that, that's to do the whole. Crystal pool and flash pattern and announce that people are going to ask them, well. I mean, these are all things we can decide what to do. Don't apply and enjoy it. Uh, the recreation on trails plan. It's thirty thousand. We already borrowed, we didn't have the money, so we took the thirty from the open space, then we were open space, so it's a matter of green bears in that account. Uh, plans and cost estimate for Steve twenty twenty-five. I mean, that's. Half a million we are applying for, that's forty-five grand, the main salary we could go. It's very broad, can use a lot of things that we have to do with the facilities complex, uh. You know, roof repairs, uh. And the twenty twenty-five connectivity grant, on the last year, that's seven eight last time, the plan, seven hundred thousand, it's only been ten hundred thousand. And that's another hundred thousand dollars to be able to apply for that. So, I mean. I think grants are good, out of life, when you think about what. Like the next person questioning what other things that we want to do it from it. And you stop. If that's what, if that's the one that then you can't get it out of it. So I think if we transfer, if we transfer to the economic development.
Councilboard finances could always transfer it back. Until it's spent, you could always.
Well, it it tends like a. We got. How many, how many million in the general fund if you want? What? I'm sorry, for the general fund. Well, right, that's what I.
You could appropriate unassigned.
Yeah.
Fund balance.
It's just a matter of getting the forum together.
The the.
All right, no, one, one agenda item.
The process of doing that, um, can be, can be very long. Um, but yes, you're you're a hundred percent right, you couldn't, that's.
I'm not saying.
But you actually could do it because we've done it many times.
Down to get rid of all of that. All of that. That's normal what we put in last year.
Kevin, just a question, you know, do you assign the transphormity to the same high plant? No, looking at it developed. That you use for other things you're putting that on?
Well, if you, if you appropriate the money for this and it's transferred in, we would, we in finance would restrict it for these. Unless the council and board of finance move to alter the appropriation and use it for something different. We we have to follow what you guys say. We said this is what we're going to use it for, we need to use it unless you guys.
Be restricted within that that fund, for the purpose of that.
Right now, um, there are communities that have an uncommitted. Balance in their capital projects fund. We don't, we need to look at our, our capital projects, we're a hundred percent. They're identified to be a project or projects. And we would continue that unless you said, the seventy-five thousand would be the one that would have flexibility because. It it was presented to you, but that would be used for future grants, so it would need to be something that the council would authorize someone to apply for using this money. And the the agenda items for the council, actually I have a funding section now, so this would be identified as, hey, we're using the seventy-five thousand or some subset of it. Um, it wouldn't, in that instance, it wouldn't come back to you guys because you've already appropriated money, but the council would have to approve, yes, go for that grant and use this money. We couldn't just, you know, Roche can't just wake up one day and say, let's go for that.
Suggestion, sort of towards that, I don't think, why don't we. Put some money in there, like put it in the regular department, and I remember the dealer, if it's unspent, and you decide you're not moving it for the fund. It would be a big asset. Then why would you have to do that? Well.
If it's unused, it goes to fund balance, it'll stay in the general fund. No, in this case, it would be seen art, would stay in the non-lapsing fund.
And and I mean, that's just. Gives us a little hedge to see how the town is doing for the year.
You know, I was just trying to look at what is. The town was not the same, not doing it, like, probably, I would knock out too long here. But and and then we'll figure it out. Yeah, no, you're right. Yeah. But if it's assigned fund balance, so we have a three hundred thousand, we can use it, and we'll never use.
That's a good, that's a good. So are you moving to reduce it and move it to the economic development account, or you just?
I I would believe, but, you know, my, as I said, I I'd like to see how the year plays out, so. I would. Take it and leave it in the economic development. Department, wherever it is now.
No, it's in transfers. That's what I'm saying. Are you proposing to move it to the economic development department? And reduce it? Which you.
But what if the grant is for different departments? If it doesn't fit into the economic development public. And the grant comes up for. I don't know, recreation or something, and then they do another transfer that would have to be made.
It would actually have to be made from the first round. Because in the charter, we can only make a transfer between departments in the last three months. That's why you're getting a big transfer motion this next meeting.
Steve plants and all them.
We are all, but what if something comes up like the, I know it was a small one, but the arts thing.
Yeah, but they were going.
But I'm just saying, what if some opportunity?
Well, I think what she's saying is what if there was a grant identified for a half a million in some Parks and Rec area, like, I don't know. Home Depot does grants and they said, hey, we'd like to.
Put it in his line and. Yeah, I I don't have a problem with that.
I mean, we could put it in townwide, in which case it can be used for any purpose.
Well, I don't, I don't know why it has to be changed or transferred, because it wouldn't be. Yeah.
Well, the transfer, we get anybody transferring to another fund, we take that money and we transfer it. Whether it's like health insurance for admin costs or other things, other thing, so I know what you're saying is leave it somewhere else in. I'm sorry? That one, economic development in the library. Townwide is actually the purview of the town manager as well. I was going to say, pardon the responsibility, I should maybe say that.
Yeah, in in general, though, if something is designated. No one's doing its credit for something. People who live there, it's. Great, great, now, nothing new by. I mean, if you change something, people would not do something like that, but.
So are you moving to move it to townwide department and reduce it?
I would. We still look back, we. We could use, you know, we need more, we need to see and do that. We gotta remember.
Well. Well, thank for getting this, you know. Lot of big projects, and we didn't, you know, we didn't want to be bad, it was just.
So you're not reducing it? Oh.
Try to. Okay, um, with four hundred thousand dollars, that's in transfers. That's correct, right?
Yes.
And move it to townwide. And reduce it by a hundred fifty thousand. Or it's two hundred fifty thousand.
Sorry? Rate is down to one point nine two increase. It's an increase of one point nine two, it's down to thirty-one forty-eight.
Right, right.
Right now. The reduction as well as the.
The public building conditions, hundred thousand.
And then we can build like something in there. We get away from me. But I do have a lot of stuff to do. Things tell me, yeah. Make twenty-five thousand in there, so that they be sort of consulting. But you don't need five hours. But then you know the technology. It's the thing what they use out of that is not that much.
Yeah.
For for studies like in the field, it's, you're you're mostly small, so five grand.
Yeah. Uh, by seven five thousand dollars, you know, when we.
Public building contractual services. The health insurance was moving. I mean, you can reduce it if you want, but I would tell you the the broker, the last time we met, which was, uh, early m-mid February. Uh, the numbers came through at an increase of twelve and a half percent.
Is there a sense that what we got going on now is going to carry over to this new year twenty-five? I mean, is that really a, you know, get into situations like that and start carrying budgeted? Ideally, we don't have lawsuits. I know we got two going down.
Ideally, but but we do have quite a few, yeah.
That's something that should be, uh, something like that, or it's a budgeted item.
The little houses dragged on for.
And that, that was the one where you did the sixteen thousand dollar transfer, because that was the non-legal on top of it.
Yeah. I mean, we do so a little bit.
Our legal costs have been, I know, pretty hot. Going in the other direction, I'll just ask the the two questions. Um, first, Mr. Watson presented the tree program. There was no money in the budget. He was directed to come talk to you because if he wanted to add that in. Uh, that would fall under the review of the historic district commission, they they have a. Tree committee, fancy your name, but I'm just gonna say tree committee. So if you wanted to add fifteen thousand dollars to their budget, the labor would be provided by the town, so it's already embedded in the budget, so that extra money that he had. Not extra, the labor portion could be removed from what he had in the team. Um, and then the second one, I'll just put it out there so you can kind of address it. Is the registrar is obviously presented, and if you look at the registrar's department column versus the town managers, it is a. A significant difference. So while you're debating it, and those two things to get lost, choose to do nothing or whatever, but just want to throw them out. And it's going in the wrong direction, but.
So even the tree request, he had fourteen for the trees and another fourteen for the labor, but they're saying just fourteen, because the labor. I think he was going to go over a separate place, or at least a separate there, because I mean, you know, the cost. I don't know. And I understand we're saying that's for ourselves.
And I did talk, sorry.
Worthly thing to do, but I think it's pricey, and do we really need to do that this year, you know?
I was thinking.
Oh, I'm not saying do it, I'm just putting it out.
I want to see this.
Yeah, but I think and I think we still need to add something.
They can look through the process later and come back and ask us later, and we can always appropriate money during the course of the year. But let them get some bids and come back and make the presentation.
Just didn't want it to get lost because they did come forward and speak about it.
No, I gave I gave some thought to it. I mean, I looked at it at the beginning this morning at like four thirty.
There's a lot of other things to do at four thirty.
Like sleep, yeah.
One more comment, you mentioned the legislators. Um, I think they have a valid concern. I think that we are going to be looking at a lot more time that we have to devote. Um, it's going to be a mess. I think, you know, fourteen early days. For just the election in November, and that's not something that's going to that. That's that's your upset. And not to mention if there's primaries or other things that we're going to have to.
And I mean, I will tell you, you can speak to it, the town manager met extensively with them and really reviewed this extensively.
So I I shared what other town registrars get paid with, uh, this term. In the list of this information, we are behind. Like, so having said that, here's what. Our talent only reached out to some of the towns that he works with. Just to give you a sense that now that I reached out, you know, going through the, you know, for what I'm doing, and these other people responded. Nothing was responded, both of them, which we are big fans, three quarters of them are not doing anything. And then others said, we want to give them a side, but we don't know, we haven't decided how. So what I propose is, you see the first year, nobody knows what they're doing. How many hours they're going to have, and we all agree, they need to be compensated for the time that they put in. But the answer is not to make each position, you know, a hundred thousand dollars benefits. I I don't know where that came from. So what I propose is, they gave yesterday a presentation, number of hours they would put in, they estimate around sixty-eight hours for the. They put them in some findings, they have all been in some hours. Hundred hours for all this finally, three forty-six of the land we mentioned, and forty for training. And why don't we ask them, for when we keep it back up their high? That each, for the each, you know, finally, tell us the hours and we can pay them. Initially, when they surveyed the hours, they said two hundred and ninety-six. I didn't have it in there, but five hundred and thirty-four. Based on those two of them. Uh, ninety-six hours, I did a, you know, spreadsheet for the all four, came up, it comes down and change. So.
Each, each.
I think that some of it was some, um, you know, training that they have to do that's being mandated by the state. Um, I don't know how much of it, and I think that once they went back and took a look at exactly the number of training. And the actual events that are happening, that's what I remember. I think they overballed it, quite honestly, when they came up with the first one, and I'm not saying you should pay them full time, you should give them benefits, that's not, but. You know, as long as they're fairly compensated, and honestly, I've been hearing in Hartford, several people have already mentioned to me, you know, what are you people doing? They're looking at how to address this, because it's going to be an issue.
I think our.
I agree with you, but you know what, if we can manage to pull off this election without a disaster, I'd be happy to see that. There, you know, between the equipment alone that they have to come up with, with all these changes. And it's, and I have to tell you, both our girls do a great job. They do. And I don't want to be looking at, you know, October, but they don't want to stay there because they feel as if they are not being compensated properly. That's all I'm saying. In your, in your.
So I'm sorry, you'll answer this, not a more question, so now to that. The blue field pain, twenty thousand population, right, twenty-three thousand three sixty, New England base thirty-one five ninety-one. Yale first twenty-four five ninety-two, Barack in twenty-one five eleven, Warren twenty-seven nine five three, Barack D P L twenty-sixteen hundred. And then two outliers, blue contains forty-seven thousand, and then seven hundred each be the forty thousand and two rate. And you're following into the forty-nine thousand four hundred.
Twenty-nine.
Forty-nine thousand four hundred.
Assistant registrars they have, I mean, that's their all.
Yeah.
Like some of these places have multiple deputy registrars that are. Have a path, I don't know, I'm asking, I don't, I don't.
Now, the town manager's budget includes an increase from eleven thousand to twenty-five thousand for additional assistance, either assistance or additional hours of deputies.
Ten thousand this year.
For each.
Also include the training bit also, like the hours. It's their time training or whatever they work with. So that was based off of the first.
The hours, the stipend they calculated for the deputy and the assistants, but they found the two of them. That's the amount of the hour.
Right.
And they're all averaging fifteen, twenty, about twelve.
Slightly above their age, basically.
Right, um, then you double that for the overtime. No, no, no. That's what the, that's the hourly rate.
Twenty hours and some weeks it could be sixty hours.
Yeah, but not a lot of weeks.
No, but still, there is.
Let's let's look, let's look at things in perspective here. We have two part-time positions. Their office hours are Tuesday from nine to eleven. Okay, that's their only office hours. They're not here for twenty hours a week each. They're here two hours, one day a week, one, and they split it. So we have to look at what's fair. If all the surrounding towns were paying more than all the towns our size. How far are we going to go with this? I mean, I read your sheet, and this is ridiculous. Do they want to be department heads making ninety thousand dollars a year with benefits?
I think that's excessive, I have to say, however, however.
I I don't agree with that, they're only here for two hours. They know they're posted hours for people wanting to invest or whatever. They're they're here much more than two hours.
They would also tell you that there's considerable work they do, either having to go to Hartford for meetings. Or training that's online that they do from home when they're not here. I'm, I also don't live with them, so I can't confirm that, but that they have stated that, they've stated that many times. I'm not saying do it, I'm just saying that I want to make sure that their voices are that they do things not necessarily wrong.
They don't work twenty hours a week, what I'm saying is they're not here, and when weeks hand out money like that, and then the people come to town hall and say, registrar voters is open from nine to eleven, okay, and the X amount of hours. We have to look at what the other towns are doing.
On the flip side of that, when they're working sixty or seventy or eighty hours already during the elections, okay? They're working that many hours, and they're not getting time to have or double time if it's a Sunday, or if it's, do you know what I'm saying?
No, I understand what you're saying, but there's a couple weeks a year.
Whatever it is, it's still time that they are working. That's, you know.
For those twenty-three hour days. You pay them twenty-three hours, you pay them.
Yeah, I know salary, right, so some weeks they might not work at all, they'll work eighty hours, so it's supposed to average out to twenty. And I do agree that you, even though they're not here, personally with this new model, they're not, but they're doing, doing all of the lines, but it's crazy, and everyone's trying to figure out how this is going to work. And, um, so and then and then some, some of the things like especially elections, that might not happen. Right, so that's why we, I think we all agree, we don't compensate them.
Yeah.
For the hours that they put in. Uh, and I, what I propose is don't do a two-time salary immediately. For the first year, have they keep track of their hours and we compensate them for them. Now, when I did the ten, it was based on two hundred and six. It's five hundred and something, it's almost doubling that, right? It'd be under twenty thousand or so.
You know, I thought you were talking about something setting down by the hour or as a stipend.
Stipend, right, some form of stipend, right.
I was talking about the hour, we talked about the.
No, we did the stipend, that's why you came up with the stipend, a hundred thousand dollars, based on the two hundred and ninety-six.
But it's based on, I guess, the. Yes, right, but yeah, so we say them, right, as a town employee, we would pay them, I know they're not a town employee, but we pay them, the town employees clock in with their hours, or they just. And they clock in like everyone else, so if they.
Yes, they can, we actually have an online system they could use, whether they were from home, can be on their phone, tablet, whatever. Hourly employees do that. Salary, non-exempt, so salary employees who are eligible for overtime. Fill out a spreadsheet online, and then salary exempt, which is like me, we don't fill anything in, we work, if I work a hundred hours, if I work one hour, the salary is exempt.
So what are they?
They're salary exempt.
The salary, that's how it was set up. So they fill out.
No, they don't, they don't fill anything. They also don't fill out for vacation time or anything. They, they're they're unique because they're elected, they're technically, technically, if anybody's their boss, it's probably you.
Everyone's with.
But as elected officials, there's not a boss per se, like Roche isn't their boss.
That they can see, you know, have a number, what they're really worth.
I didn't think for this year, we talked a little bit way in the beginning of this, okay, you would come up with a number for holiday rate, what we pay was thirty-six in China. That during the election, the the few weeks we have for the election and the week before leading up to it. That they retract their hours and we pay them based on holiday rate. I would be good with doing that this year, to see what happens, to see how it develops. And then we can make a decision next year as to how to go forward with this. I don't want to make a big change this year. And then we're stuck with it forever.
I think that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
Right, that's it.
Yeah, well, I, but I see in the budget, it was just a listed stipend, it wasn't broken down as to be an hourly.
I thought it was all.
That statement thing, is that he, is a love son, or how, what's your intention?
I told me always, well, we met with a couple times, but I thought it was all, how we think about that stipend, well, we didn't call this stipend, we called it, that's what you said, we retract their hours during those weeks. And we kind of estimated based on their two hundred and ninety-six, three hundred hours, it would be ten grand. That's how I thought we left it. And if it's more hours, it's more hours, but I mean, if we're going to track the hours, why don't we pay hours? Why would we? Kind of make up a stipend that we don't even know how much they're working, because some of these elections might not even have.
Pretend all of a sudden, you know, we're working twenty-three hours a day, and, you know, all these days, and goes to seven hundred hours.
Yes. Well, I did, I did make that point to them as a former government employee myself, a lot hours, I didn't get paid for, that's a little bit of dedication to the job, too. And other town employees here, like the salary people, I'm sure they put in, in very days, put in a lot more hours than they pay for, uh, you know, hours. So I think.
It's for the joy.
It's for the joy.
What are we discussing our split?
There's another second person who hasn't seen it, I mean, the higher administrator is a second position. And I'm sure he spends way more hours than, so, I mean, there has been precedent for that, and I don't think that that's a bad idea, but this year, because we don't know what's going to happen.
The tree warden is the same, there's a tree warden stipend as well.
But there are, they, but they're, they're, they're pretty well established by just, right, both, the tree warden and Jim here, they kind of know. But we have no clue how this is going, right? We have no clue whatsoever. What if, well, it's going that way, we know where it's going sideways, but but I mean, I mean, timeline, what if there's, so there's not some of the elections, so.
But I mean, even the tree board, uh, you know, when I cover this one, the tree board, you know.
Did more.
Did more, and it balances out, so it's unsure that.
But we got a history with them, we have no history with this at all, brand new, that everyone.
I think Roche, yeah, Roche came up with a number because we need some dollars in the budget to pay for that, and and then, like everything else, we'll go with what, you can go with what we came up with.
Now it doubled from when we initially started, but. We were at, now, now we're at twenty grand per person.
No, we're at ten.
Then that's twenty, twenty grand, we're having twenty grand, based on last night.
A person, yeah, right.
Five hundred hours per person?
Yeah.
Because they're both here, you have a Republican, a Democrat.
I thought the worksheet was total.
Now. It was the two ninety-six initially, per person, it was the three hundred basically per person, I thought it was. Twenty grand, so you're.
So if you take, uh, yeah, hourly rate in five hundred and thirty-four, that's ninety dollars.
Once, and that twice, not just.
Like double.
Double. So that's forty thousand more.
Yeah.
In the line.
Yes.
And right now you have twenty thousand, so you're going to double and work this.
We don't have. Give me a little bit more. But I I don't know, I mean, it's an, again, it's an unknown.
Track their hours, so that you can see where they are. We know they're doing the primary, presidential primary, even if we don't have it in the summer.
Right, still track your hours.
Track their hours, so you know.
So we would steal the ten thousand dollars stipend. There's no way I'm going to look for twenty thousand by each, that that's not happening.
Yeah, if you don't modify, we're already changing among the most surrounding towns at ten thousand dollars. If you don't modify it, you would have three hundred thousand contingencies in the budget too, that could be transferred in if, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
If if it were to run higher, I'm not saying three hundred thousand for that, I'm saying available. Something would go really wrong.
The thing is on, the thing is on the olive. On the olive, it's slippery shit.
It is.
So I mean, I don't really want to do that, because. I've had people that, you know, look for me, and all of a sudden overtime doubles. I'm not, I'm not saying they're not.
No, I know.
Who March has met, he said, you know, do twelve to.
Twelve to fifteen, maybe you go up there.
But originally the clocks were based, the hourly was based on up to three hundred hours, sorry. And all of a sudden, last night, it turned into five hundred and fifty hours, I don't even know where that came from.
There's a lot of mandates that. But it adds, I understand, but you have an issue with it, but the state is mandating certain things. There is more hours in that they will have to invest. Monitor your hours, you know, none of us like to work for nothing, even though we're all sitting here making nothing.
Why we're right here, we're all here. Because we love it, we're all here.
All right, so are you good with the ten thousand?
Well, I'm good with the ten thousand.
All right, then I'm good with that.
But I'll, I'll serve it. I was, I was going to go put these out.
Unless you finish tonight, you could also, table, revisit it, you're planning, again, we saw a fight.
I, I would rather use, I think of ten thousands, with the fact that we're paying thirty-eight thousand together. And Roche has the wish to tell us, and I've looked at you telling us, language even less.
You know, they're talking about.
Again, a lot of them.
They're the ones who give value to what we do. A lot of them. I don't ever cite that, no, hundred percent, no, not a weapon group, but I can respect how we see themselves. But. I would go through the.
That's one thing I'll do, part of, part of this election, part of this election cycle is falling into March, April. So the first part of that will be in this fiscal year, so when you think of the calendar year. Uh, this budget is for the August, November, and then obviously next year as well, so. If you think about what's coming up in, what, two weeks or so, that's gonna be something that we will have to do a transfer or whatever to make them. Hold for whatever this is, and then we'll have a, a better idea, so. Um, just kind of throw it out, that depends what April will be like next year and what would happen.
Is this, uh, I know that we're working with this long calendar years, but. This stipend is just something that is paid, how, how do you figure out the stipend? In terms of, you pay them once, twice, literally, monthly, how do you pay a stipend?
So many ways to, they've been discussed, if there were two elections, we thought twenty-five hundred, yes, right, that, you know, same burden of taxes, so. Um, it's, so what had, didn't like the United, we want the whole thing added to salary. Because what if you don't have a special election, that means they're not gonna get a stipend for that, right?
The following year, I mean, presidential election versus a local election, it's like apples and oranges, you know? So it's like variables by year.
May I say this something?
Yes.
Give the ten thousand, but whatever the difference you wanna do, you'll pay that as stipend this fiscal year. We have to pay them something. You know, for the difference.
Twenty, twenty. So, so do the ten and give them the twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, next budget year.
Yes. So, we'll, we'll, we can find somebody.
And before that, we're eight, we're giving twenty-five hundred.
All right, right, you know, I, I go along with the first, I should, we do, I like your idea, we do the twenty-five hundred in this fiscal year. We're gonna allocate ten each in the next fiscal year, and based on what we see, you know, doing something this year. We can, we can do something next year, but we need more data.
Yes.
You know, we're not gonna burn taxpayers with something that we don't know.
You can modify it, get through part of the year, but this is a disaster.
And it's, you know.
So all that, no change for the trees, no change for registrar.
Twenty-five hundred dollars. Cover the April mess and the referendums. I mean, the referendum's business as well, no, that's not that. Yeah.
Yes.
Well, that's gonna make it a little bit easier. Right, right, right. Yeah, one location, yeah.
The thing I can really help them. You wanna place public side of schools, because that's. I think this one, they're all for sure, good interview, so we have a lot of that, it will be, we do, we, we have. Remember, that's why they have a.
It must be a clear, immediate. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I will be quiet.
You're the state legislator in here.
I'm sorry.
Jerry, you came late, you messed it up.
So you still need three hundred, three hundred fifty thousand to match your add-in to municipal revenue.
Five hundred is an issue for you.
Thank you.
So it's effectively qualified.
I'm planning a bond issue, and I don't wanna get into the details of the bond issue, but we've got some numbers in here. As issuing debt in June, because there's principal payments in the next budget. I know we've done it before, we'll do first act through July, and then not have principal payment. It's not a lot, but. That's five hundred, twenty thousand.
I mean, what you're doing is trading, well, you're trading twenty-five debt payments for, if it's a ten-year bond, thirty-five, basically you're thirty-six.
Yes. It's kicking the can down the road.
You're shifting.
Gives this budget a little bit of that. I guess it would cut the interest payments down a while also.
No. If you, if you in July, they're gonna expect every six months, yeah.
But I mean, if we did it later in July, you know, if they.
They're gonna expect.
In January, July again.
If we did it, say, in September, we could push it out, but it's, it's every six months, they're expecting. I mean, the, the primary. I mean, the, the primary buyers are insurance companies and pension funds, so the cash flow is what they expect, the serial bonds, having to make those.
Do you see any down sides to that?
You know, I guess if you move into town ten years from now, when the bond market's retired, you're paying on it, I mean, that, that's about it, but they're not voting this year, so.
I'm also thinking, if they change the trial, you know, they change the rate in June, signs align, maybe it's lower.
It, it might be, but rates have already come down, I mean, like I said, you're doing two or three. Meaning, we haven't borrowed since June of twenty twenty, when we did that, the, the average rate in the market was around two and a half to three percent, and we issued it sub one percent. And Berlin, unless something changes dramatically, and we don't see it from our numbers, is a. Typically is a very low end in terms of interest rate, well, it's a desirable community to loan money. I, I mean, the, the municipal rate is around two to three percent today. So realistically, we should be on the low end of that, oh, yeah, it's very. The people who complain about seven percent more.
Yes.
Okay, um, well, then we're gonna hope that you've been that moved off to July. Make a motion to, uh, reduce the principal payment account, which you are doing twenty-four, like. Three hundred thousand, five hundred. And the principal payment schools, which you will give out in October, not maybe three hundred thirty to a thousand.
Just to make one point, so you're aware, that would not be part of the six forty you need to get to for the municipal revenue sharing grant, because that's considered debt service. They're all in school, that's two hundred thousand five hundred, and I'll post this on the website, it's March, three thirty, four, five hundred. No, the interest, yeah. You're down to up of one seventy-two. Your mill rate increases, is it one seventy-two, it was a two point two two increase coming into the night. Cut half a minute. Yeah, you cut half, exactly. You want to eliminate it, or do you wanna appropriate fund balance and leave it in? Or you talked about using fund banks, or do you wanna just eliminate? So eliminate, okay.
That, I just made a comment on, on that. When the, uh, golf course does its budget. The cooperating expenses and capital are covered by revenues. So, there's a sixty-seven thousand dollar item in capital, that's actually being paid through fees, and not with operating expenses.
Actually, it's an opportunity, Jerry.
It was a thirteen thousand.
Yeah, when, when we, when we did it, that was specifically removed, the capital was specifically removed, so that the flat fees with. Twenty twenty-three levels would cover the cost of fifty ordinance.
But your budget in years only thirty thousand.
There is, there's always a little overage from uncertainty, but the capital.
But that's with the capital.
So what are you saying, moving sixty-seven thousand?
Because you had actually brought, you had brought that up right before the fee schedule meeting. That it wasn't in balance, but it was. Right.
Four thousand, one six eight, one hundred thirty-four. And two sixty-seven. The total revenues are one six six eight, three fifty-four. So, we're not including all the restaurant ranking.
There's the capital out, sorry, I'm trying to find the exact number, that would bring it down to one point two six, increase thirty point eighty-two. No.
If you consider one seventy-two, it would be one point two six.
Yeah, taking all the capital out would bring it down, so again, you started two point two two to. And it would bring you down to one point two six, that's the inlet.
I don't know if they include the restaurant.
That's about a big number, was it?
Dollar, sixty-seven thousand.
Yeah, so it's not.
So you wanna leave sixty-seven thousand in? That would get you to one point two eight increase instead of one point two six, yeah. But do you want me to leave that, leave the sixty-seven out in?
Just take the whole thing.
Do you wanna take a vote on that, or no?
I, I just be curious to see.
Okay. Okay.
Go with that, for that, oh, we don't wanna say that. There you go.
The limited now is I'll have a, funny ass question, and you're trying to get answers, but somehow, you know, you try and interpolate, okay? You know, less cost by, you know, you don't need five hundred for, I think it's surplus, but other redistributive. But that, that's a projected clock of fifty-one, three fifty-five, I think, I mean, it does. And I said, by giving three percent all of the, like, one or four to death, we. We wrote in fifty-one years, which if you said, what can make the budget? Don't compare it to the fifty, so, and if they have some. Or maybe if you're seeing sound, and if you, if you, we need to.
So that people on one is.
It's based on their, depending on whether it's, I assume, they're a job and everything. Again, like they're in the name, to do the literature, therefore it's something. No, um. I guess I just.
Yeah, but I don't have, I think I have it here somewhere, but yeah, I know, it's basically just the kind of showing, yeah, yeah.
You know, the danger though, we come in every year, you know, every year, no, I'm serious, I'm not, I'm listening to you. You, you, you know, you're coming from budget to budget every year, it's not really understanding what the baseline values are, you, you know, what, what's. What was engaging me, like, what's the real tax for that budget? And when you go in my, you know, in my career, if somebody ever came into my office and said. You know, I'm gonna come off, I'm, I'm on five percent off my previous year budget, I'm calling my, my office, please, I wanna look at actual funds, I know this is different, and, you know. Private business, but I will call my, my office. You know, last year's, in last year's, uh, present patron, you know, on five point eight four percent. Again, three point six, that, they went following, so it's five twenty-four, we would have to miss all these spots in order to get. The three point six, and we talked about that earlier, okay? They didn't make those. So, you know, the slate is coming, you know, the state is still paying too, and that was our budget position, I don't agree, okay, I mean, you think. Well, like you said. But, the sweeping thing with this budget, I, I'm not just saying, knowing that there's no more asset funds, I have now open choice. July, believe me, that last year, there was a. It's all a mess, for efficiency purposes, but. I'm looking at this, and I'm like, well, there's no asset funds, well, I have open choice, and we got to be a period of, what's it called, further visit on its money, so they can build during the summer.
I'm like, all right, then, without again, I, I'll go for a short one here. But that's my over seven, and I'm telling you, like, I see more than a third as well, but then you're on. But again. I am not considering.
No, I understand that, but you know, the thing is, when we were at our last meeting with the board of education. The mayor asked, you know, share your meetings. Where did you make all those adjustments, I guess? And they gave them that sheet, like, and they looked at that sheet, okay? They didn't make those adjustments. Okay, matter of fact, for everybody's record here, I give enough a line because I love them doing this on killing. That's the sheet they gave me. Okay, that's a different sheet. And then they also gave me some minutes to long meeting, and the only thing they were considering cutting was the pay expenses for twenty thousand dollars. With a memo. Okay, so you can't, I wish you stand, they said, I believe all those base numbers, you know, I don't. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. Nothing to me that supports me coming off from one budget to the other budget and saying, I need six point, you know, six percent or whatever that is. That is not supported. And so that's okay, you have your, exactly, I, I respect where you come from, I know exactly what you're saying, what you're saying, because I think that what happened in not even last year, but the last few years, stuff like that, there's a lot of. But yeah, like. You know, if the asset fund is still there, I'm near to doing this. And maybe I will.
That's all, this is my fifth project. And every summer, we will be coming with. Last year was the biggest increase we did. But every one when he's bringing it. Beat over two, three and a half, which I already. And every year, they pulled surplus. I, I don't, I just can't believe their budgets anymore, and that's just the reality of things, they come in, and they're not small, we're not small surplus. They're not coming with a couple hundred thousand dollar surplus. So, and, and every year, we're we're gonna have to let off people, they're gonna have the front classes, it doesn't happen. If their staff is gone up. In the five years that I've been doing it, now their staff has gone up every year. So I don't even go with these numbers, I don't give any of it, and when you have somebody who could book the president, motivate calling you. Just give us, pretty much, give us the check and shut up. I'm not good with that. That is not good. Well, I, I'm not good with that, so. I, my number's gonna be based on what we have to give them, and if they need more, they can come back and show us where they need it. Because that's the only way we're gonna get them out of the new one. I, I just, I'm not having it the way they handled this year at all. And they had a long period of time.
Can I just clarify the lady, I then, that, that new drink, the D C S name? What's the name of that? Maybe, or what's that, you're saying, or the? Or you, you said?
I, I would probably be, in, I think because they have salary costs and everything else, but I think the other thing I'm saying is, once again, you've been there for five years, and their sense is gonna jump up any minute, and it's bound to get. Their student population fell over fifteen percent in ten years, and yet they've cut most of that. And they've actually increased the staff.
And I can just say something.
Yeah. This is a question. The education system. And this, I've seen it. There are things out there, and things that. First, second, even as hard as this. Where they had a two year, you know, when the stuff that they need all the people to get, I think Karen gives no school a really elementary level. Like, all these people that don't get colored. Like, they're helping these kids to catch up to where they shouldn't be. Had the pandemic not happened. And it's not just like, oh, we're here in twenty twenty two, twenty twenty eight, everything will be back to normal. It's quite nearly the opposite. Even if things aren't good. I don't know if this is because of parents who work at home, and here, here's an iPad, if I thought it was, yes, here's an iPad, who watched the. Six hours on end. They go to the stores and think they're not. They can't rationalize learning. They can't understand how to work, they don't know how to learn, how to, what do you mean, I have, I actually have boundaries, I have to respect those boundaries and socialize. It's a wreck. Well. Our experts don't throw that, they've gone down to the rest of the government, they have standards. It stepped back a little bit during COVID, but they've actually bounced back now, and they're very middle for COVID.
Are you saying that, you it says that whatever it's, whatever they're doing, the electric staff is actually learning? It's, you know, I'm not arguing as much as what the parameter is, much of the dollar is. But that's not, and I'm not sorry, that's, you know, and even the, yes, they're spending the money. Maybe should, they should have been more prudent, knowing, you know. Maybe, why did they hire more people, I mean, they, they were gonna cut from, from five. Five point four, three point, three point six, they were gonna cut people, and then they add people, I mean, so, so, I mean, I can't, I can't even justify that.
I wouldn't know that a lot of people are shy. That's the number I'm trying to do. They're just stupid. That's what, you understand that? And it's, it's the same old story, if they need more, they can always come back. But at least this time, we get an answer for why they need it. And now we're on line. But that's, that's who we are.
You would propose to reduce and propose to two, two, three now?
Oh, oh, I.
So when you have, when you.
Two percent.
And that five hundred K is actually being generous. Five hundred K, there's gonna be more.
And you go crazy, and you, well, I appreciate it, so they're two percent, come out of the last.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I guess I'm. I don't know either. And I would like to come in at two percent to start with and see what they say. And see whether they're willing to actually open this moment up and justify it. Or whether they want to play the secretive game or not, and they're gonna go, they're not gonna cut the football code, like they tried three years ago, I mean. Ridiculous things. They have fifty million dollars, we've been told point blank, it's none of our business how they allocate it. All the issues they have is an allocation of funds and resources. They have a lot of other programs that are great now with Volland. But to your point, is that where they should be spending their money? I think it's great to have a designated program, right? But is that really with the fundamental issues that you were talking about, money that shouldn't spend? And it's a wealth of community college is out there in this, in this vocational school. Why have that program? It's a great program, but is that, if you were running the show and you have a cute problem that you, you just mentioned and all that, and learning, so. Is that the thing that you jump on first? I can tell you first, I mean, they're worried about seniors ready to graduate versus kindergartners and first graders, you don't know how to learn.
I'll, I'll say this. I, I I appreciate the type of work I've had with the. I don't know, if they're even doing back to auto. They're a program that should be used that. These kids are likely. In my opinion, so.
I, I, I'm not saying it's that, oh, no, I'm just saying, as an example, it's like, they're setting their priorities, so given that we don't get insight into what those are. I, I can't tell you the two hundred programs that they have, that they're the most two hundred important programs they, they should be buying, and that's not my job either. But our job is to try to figure out. You know, where are we in our ability to pay as a, as a town? Uh, we've got more than two thousand parents we have to worry about. I, I've got seventy five hundred seniors, probably which five thousand are fixing comes, oh, by the way, I'm one of them. I retired ten years ago, I do not get a cola. My pay is the same, my pension is the same as it was ten years ago, but my taxes are, my cost of everything, huh? So we need to have some sensitivity to those seventy five hundred people also, not just the two thousand parents that are out there. But on the same, we have an obligation to make sure that they're funded at an adequate level, and I know you mentioned that other, the other day, that, you know, the per pupil spending and whatever, you don't have a lot of faith in that, but I'm gonna look at those numbers anyways to say relative to every other town, are, are, are we massively shortchanging our people, and the answer is no. We're not, they talk about the dirt, I look at the dirt, and there's, there's twenty four pounds in the dirt, we're, we're the tenth highest. They, they say, oh, you're middle of pack, but we're the tenth highest out of twenty four. Look at that list of eight, we ran the numbers on that, we're the highest out of those eight schools, per pupil spending, and that includes Glassingale. And eight years ago, we were in the bottom. We're in the bottom, so we have made.
You think I would need the glass, you know, for this? Now, that's a part of it, very less. It's in the lab.
Just an example.
Uh, but I, I know what you're saying, but.
Okay, but Glassingale, then.
Now, you were talking about how many times. You think they have a senior student goes.
Yeah, we got more.
We have more students.
Okay, so now all the.
It's not for students, it's. For students.
No, but it matters, you know, we should, we should out in, in the. You're talking about five hundred in dirt, and just possibly maybe eighteen, nineteen thousand, really? So, I can remember, uh, that's kind of the purpose of the dirt, right? It's to make, uh, sort of what, on economic people and putting for. That's what I'm saying, so I'm respectful of my taken. What else do we have?
Based on how to bring from.
Got, got in state?
Thankfully, when they were in the lower, angle that we have, so it was like the charts. So there is a rationale behind these charts. And you gotta look at cost per student too. I mean, we've done good by funding, you know, Board of Education the last seven years.
All I, as my starting point, absolutely, I wanna see, again, I don't, I don't know what they're gonna do, they may come back with some things and have and provide us with ample justification that would make us have pause. And then it's always a vote too, you know? But, but that should back on every day, they, figure out what's going on, I don't know.
When you all tell me what you're doing, really gonna help to come back and ask. So.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, tell me what you're pressing on, I'm not, I'm not gonna give you the. You're gonna have to come back and call me, why would you?
Yeah, I know where you're headed, Tom, on the upside, right, you've done a great job of this, at least, even though we sometimes say, why do we got so much surplus? But we've done a good job from early on, and you really say, here's a potential topic to use in this. You know, and with the other, a month ago, right, I asked the questions on the January report saying, you know, you helped mostly, I mean, some of the, in this category, from me, is there gonna be remaining, you know, funds up? They can't even answer that question, so how do you expect me to, you know, so I gotta make my own determination. It should be fair that a fifty million dollar budget, they should answer those questions. And they just don't.
Twenty thousand citizens, they should be answering.
Represents, it's kind of our town expenses, and, and they don't have a right to answer those questions clearly?
It feels like, yes, I appreciate you guys.
If I had two kids in school, I'd probably take your position too. You know, we're all in all different, you know, though, just, I would talk to a lot of parents in the last ten years. Many parents think they get more than enough money. They're very satisfied with our school system, that's why there's no houses for sale in bro. Because it's a very desirable town to move to for the school system, and I hear that from North Hill Mayor, I heard Knowington. Orleans, uh, very, very desired place to be. And Raoul just did that one point the other night. I gave him that chart. I said, can you just note it on the chart, what you cut? No, they passed out that other travesty, I'm sorry, that didn't answer the question. Very simple question, very simple answer. Here's what we cut in those categories that we put out to the public. They can't answer that question. How come you can't answer that? Because they didn't cut any of them, that's why they can't answer it. Why, I mean, that's not just for me, that's for the people, they put that out to the people, and said, we were falling off the financial cliff. Not nowhere in the air phone. No, I mean, they didn't answer the question, my lord, it's the taxpayer, it's taxpayer money, it's not their money. I don't care what they do.
And, and then it's my taxpayer money.
Yes, it's mine too, you answered to.
I like, I like to pay taxes much as you do.
Yeah, I hate it.
But I know the blue whatever, red whatever, but no one likes to pay taxes, not me, the first to put my hand up and say, I hate paying taxes.
Will pay if you get value for it. If you know where it's going to, but when you don't know where it's going to, and they can't answer what they put out there to the public last year, they can't answer what they did for it. I, I don't even understand what world that's in.
Wasn't there, wasn't there a question in town council? Hold on, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was.
Wasn't there a question? Asked, the town council to change, how much we could ask? Then, were they, they could tell us? Wasn't there like a?
I don't remember that. I mean, they're telling, I think that they're, they're mixing, they're mixing apples and mortgages. Yeah, we can't tell them how to spend it, we know that, and we don't tell them how to spend it. But we're asking them how you did spend it, because that's the chart, that's their chart to the public last year. To rile everybody up, okay? So you never really riled everybody up anyway, it didn't really work, but bottom line is, so what happened when you got the three point six? You know, what, that chart, it goes right up to the, what do they want, actually, five point eight three, or whatever. Whatever they want, but, so, but they can't answer that. This is.
This is a major problem, because there.
I was on the charter revision commission in twenty sixteen, and we purposely actually put a subtle point into the chart of, unfortunately, failed, that the Board of Finance and every other organization had to provide the information, and the, the director of finance asked them to in a format he asked them.
Unfortunately, it's a relative.
But.
You should be all screaming at me.
They refused to give us information, they, they, it used to be the town council, I don't know if you know Dave Adams, but it used to town council like the university. And he, he was really your budget guy.
He was, he was your room, yes, he was.
Was all over the Board of Education, but he would FOI information, whatever, he would get down to the, the department level detail, whatever. And every time he asked for information, they would dump boxes and boxes. Because that was their attempt, it's, you know, that you're never gonna figure it out. They were, they weren't transparent with them then, they're not transparent with us.
He is, he is unbelievable with the.
Seventeen and everyone.
But. I have a little familiarity with now, even with the other red dirt set budgets, and, and I have a little bit more trust, you know, than you guys could be really building in these last few years. So when and I see the side of the increase, I'm like, it would take a year. But when I see that they think that there's contractual obligations, except four point two. I start from there, but I know that they're not gonna spend it all, and not because they have playing with numbers, when the difference is happening all over the year. You know, living, they've exchanged each to genders on something or whatever. However, the other things that you're just trying to eliminate me is still exists, they still have the contractual services, the transportation and utilities. And I see that, you said, I'm not even planning, but supplies, equipment and other expenses, they still have those. And I think it's fortunate that they've had a way to come back and ask for another, and I know that that's, if you look at it, it's like a church store. On one hand, they must have enough money because they're not coming back. But it would be worse, I think, if they came back every year and said, oh, we spent all our budget, and now we're gonna be another million dollars. Like, and I don't think that's ever happened, given history of Berlin, you know, the Board of Education, that's to their say. Because whatever they have been giving, they have to deal with it, just like hundred points, so once that budget is there, they can't change that for more during the year.
Um, so just one part, okay, so they have to stop, so part it off, again, it's the danger of coming off of base here. In every case, in the last six years, we've given them increases, the less than contractual person that they were asking to do. And they have plenty of budget to do with the community service.
So you got the danger of being used now, yeah?
Danger, but I think that's because of stuff changes and other variables, and so if the bus kind of comes in higher, they may not handle it higher, yet aid or whatever, I, I think that they're very good at using the money that they can give them. I, I give them credit, not think of the rate something, because of that. Um, and so. I'm not comfortable with four point two. I'm not comfortable with two. I feel a lot more comfortable with like a three, three five. So between the middle, maybe on the voice of, you know, compromise, but I just think that. To give them less than three, but to be a different less than three five, is just hoping around, again, with the, the war of. Words. You may wanna know what they spend their money on, sort of what they have in stock. But I'm not sure that the six sentences. Are in our favor or in the townspeople's favor. During the. Townspeople's favor, when we vote for the majority of people, when the parents, you can kind of think that's that, but not directly being in a budget. Like, we are.
I understand that, but you, you would deserve this when you. When you don't get what you want and you write letters to all the parents going home. With the drucumian cuts that we're gonna have to make, you know, that we.
Particular report, I didn't expect any less of them.
Expect them to be blatantly lies?
I, well, I don't have any students of that. That was the thing.
Not a single thing materialized that they said. And they had, they had parents riled up to be.
Oh, I know. Seemed to be the sacred power of a lot of the townspeople when they, they were, uh. Nickel been dying on the countryside. It does. Great timing after a while. And a lot of the employees that work. On the countryside have a deep resentment to the government, um, because it is. Something that they feel that is a sacred power.
I don't think it's fair. We, every year, we hammer the outside. But they put the word of that, and if we. If we took just their contractual obligations that they give us every year. And just another time I've been on the budget, you guys have been doing it for what, eight years time? We would keep millions of dollars deep into the doors of that budget that we analyze out, and they would still have that same number in front of you.
And I wouldn't go with them. I, I wouldn't go with that. Just because seems to. But I also think that going below a three, two, three, five.
I, I, I think to some degree what, what I would like to see, and you know, I work for North East Utilities. I had thirty-five million dollar budgets. Every year, we, we didn't ask, we weren't asked how much more we wanted to expect them. We said, how much you gonna cut, you know? I wanna see your zero percent, your minus one percent, your minus two percent budget. And, you know, that, that was the reality of, of business. I know they're, they're not, you know, still in, in a business per se. But at some point, we have to try to find out what the true baseline is. When you can't find out what the true baseline is, if you give them. More than we really, we think they need. So if, if the two percent is, one more, one year at two percent, we'll, we'll find out a lot. We could, may be wrong, but we need to find the baseline. And then hopefully we can track from there going forward. We're not there.
I, I got a different perspective and analogy. I think we just take it way too personally. Stuff that comes out of the Board of Ed. Whether it's about the cuts or. Big numbers in the original budgets. You know, if they're doing their job, we're doing our job. We know that those budgets are not ever gonna get passed. And then it's up to us to do whatever we can with them. Right? I don't look at the details in what programs they're doing, or what they're actually having to do. You know. I look at it, as you had mentioned before, we have to do this based on like a town from a board. And, you know, the, the product that they're putting out, right, in broad terms, right, not program by program or. Anything like that. So. Means I look at it and. I don't care what they say it would be to cost. Right? And the only thing that cares is what number do I want to get. Right? And that's the right focus. It, it has. Everything to do with history. What if they come back in the past? What aren't we spending? Okay, what are we, and that's really the only thing. State statute says we appropriate the bottom one. And that's what they can do with it, whatever they want. We can ask a lot of questions and some of our questions are valid. Some of them get into policy. And I think if we ever had the county attorney from here, we'd probably, we'd probably say the same thing. That we're entitled to certain information, but. You know, if you're worried about a, a particular program that they have, well, that's too bad.
That's not, that's not what he said. We asked, we asked an opinion. That should, the chart, we'll just give you the chart as an example. He said they have every, that is your right. They should be giving you that.
We can ask, we can ask you, but I don't think the state statute says.
It does. He said it does. I can only go with legal advice, but that's what he said.
I, I dealt with the signees before.
Me too. I'm an attorney. I know what you mean. So. I'm sure we can, but thirty years municipal law, he spent time on the Board of Ed in Trumbull. I think he kinda knows what he's talking about here. I'm sorry. We can, we can interpret it all day long. I get it.
I, I think my bottom line is we're worried so much about the details. And.
Devils in the detail though.
Well, it, it, it could be. But if you let it get to you. And I think that's, that's part of the problem there. Like, you know, I look at it and I say, and they live with. This percentage and that's based on my experience and what I know of their budget. Uh, I was sitting initially when I saw the six point four. Uh, you know, after looking at it and, and doing my consideration, I was at three point two. So. I mean, that, and that was based on the fact that we had. Uh, an additional. I, I did give them credit for having to bring in the Esser, uh, positions, which was. Two hundred sixty-five thousand. Um, you know, and then looking at it and saying. You know, about a, you know, a. Inflation has to have some factor in there. Uh, you know, regardless of whether. You know, it doesn't get down to the granular level of them adding positions. Uh, but it did take into effect the Esser. You know, brands that, so I was, I was looking somewhere. I mean, there's only, if you want more comments in your, your comments, there is. Forget the beep if, you know, that they, you know, more, you know, questioning their time for all this. But this did show in the last six years, that we, they, they get, they requested this percentage amount. They got this. Different percentage, and they still have room in their budget. So you can't, you can't ignore that, I'm speaking.
I'm not.
Well, you, you are kind of, you know.
Because that's, that's what I'm taking into account when I'm saying it's not six point four, it's three point two.
So I guess at this point, um.
Yeah, I know that at least one, the couple have some conflicts Monday night. Do you still wanna meet Monday night? There's Monday, next Monday and next Wednesday. By next Wednesday, we really have to have it ready to go because it has to be published for the public to know for the following Tuesday at the annual budget hearing. So I, I, with conflicts and stuff, I don't know if you want to cancel Monday night or you wanna keep it?
Well, I, I prefer the.
So do you wanna cancel Monday or just do Wednesday? And you're, you're down to really, capital of B O E. It's already on calendar. It's already noticed. And, uh. Like I said, you're, you're really discussing everything. You're down to those two pieces. I mean, I realize they're big. Okay, I will, this is the cancellation of Monday night. We'll come back. On the twentieth. It goes to the annual budget hearing first. Then at the end, after the budget hearing that night, they will send it to the council.
What, what, the third, right?
Yes, you have a special meeting. So the annual budget of hearing, twenty-six, they'll vote that night and then the third is five business days later. This year's a little funky because you get good.
I could, I could. Yeah, I would like to see both of them.
Well, what I could do is a little chart of two, two and a half, three, three and a half. I'll go all the way to Raul's four point two.
I'm being very realistic.
That would be helpful to see.
Yeah, well, it's fine. You wanna stay tonight? I mean, I could, I could do it, but I assumed you wanted to go home. So if you take two, two, three, nine, so sales, that's your reduction, right? You'd get to point nine five. And that would give you a two percent increase.
If you put nine five over.
Sorry. Thirty point five, that's a, that assumes that capital is still in completely. This is, do you want me to take capital out at the end of this? Oh, okay.
Why don't you work it out?
Actually, I was gonna be active. Do you wanna start doing now?